And I'll try not to take too much of your time, Charlie says I've got less than two hours. So I'll get that through here. So a couple of months ago in the province, we declared a provincial state of emergency in the province of B.C. That provincial state is still in active right now for a few more days. It's been the longest provincial state of emergency ever in the province of British Columbia. The last provincial state was in 2003 during the Clonawalt fires, in which time Comox Fire Department and myself both participated in those fire councils. So over the summer, there's been obviously dozens and dozens of fires, dozens of evacuation orders and alerts affecting thousands and thousands of people. Pretty much every part of the province has been touched by a fire with the exception of the island. We've got pretty unscathed here, just a few sinofgant fires on the island. So I've got a couple of stories to tell. The first one will be about my role in these jobs. For many years, I'd worked for the Office of the Fire Commissioner part-time when I'm bored in the summertime. So what that means is the Office of the Fire Commissioner has very little staff throughout the year. They usually only have two or three full-time staff members. And they run their business. When the province gets busy with different activities, they ramp up by hiring people like myself part-time to come and assist them. Wildfires would be an example of that. The Olympics in 2010 was an example of that, where we did participate in that. Other things would be teaching. I do some teaching form from time to time and some investigation work from time to time. That's some of the larger fires. So in this particular case, I was asked to go as what they call a structural protection specialist to 150 Mile House on July 8th. So by the way, there's 10 of us in the province that do this. I'm number two on their seniority list, and I told them to put me number 10 on the call list this year because I'm waiting for a hip replacement. So lo and behold, on July 8th, they called me and I said, "You couldn't have gone through that list already." And they said, "Yes, we have. You're going to 150 Mile." So I went there and started doing what I do. Basically, a structural protection specialist looks after the structures that are involved with an interface fire or wildfire. So our job is to try to protect those structures by putting sprinklers on them, by using fire engines and tanker trucks and other resources to keep them from burning down. We work hand-in-hand with the forestry people while they're trying to put out a forest fire, we try to protect the structures. So that's just a couple of shots of me doing that type of thing. Lots of helicopter rides, by the way, when I get to do that. One of my trips, I flew from Williams Lake to Belacoula in helicopter one afternoon. As noted, I started in Belacoula, or Williams Lake. Three days into that, there's a fire that broke out in Belacoula. They asked me to go there, flew me there by helicopter to look after a fire that was there. And I spent most of the rest of the summer in that particular area. This is the type of thing that I would be doing when I'm there looking after resources like this. So 100 fire departments in British Columbia participated this year in the interface fires. So this is in Anaheim, British Columbia, where I had a couple of structural protection units, which are the trailers and the crews, four or five fire engines and a couple of tender trucks. Some of the resources I'm working right now. The fire trucks are typically there to patrol the highways or major roads and protect the highways from spot fires and things like that. And they'll work 24 hours a day. As I mentioned, I went to Belacoula. After two weeks in Belacoula, I came home, worked a week at Comox here, thought I was done for the summer. Then they sent me back to the Clinton fire, which is what they just know as the Elephant Hill fire, the bigger fire. Spent a couple of days there, it was a relief for somebody else that was working there. I went to a Pressey Lake fire, which well, 40 cabins were down in Pressey Lake a couple of weeks ago. I also went to a fire in Clearwater, and lo and behold, they called me to go back to Anaheim. So I've been all over the place all summer, 35 days on the road more or less, and had a really good experience. Second part of the story is what the fire department did here. And so on July 10th, our fire department was asked to deploy to Belacoula. We deployed with a pickup truck and our structural protection trailer, which I'll show you a picture of in a moment here. The structural protection team consists of five trained people, and their job is to protect the structures in front of the fires. Comox Fire spent 50 consecutive days in the Belacoula-Anahem area doing this protection. We had 17 of our firefighters participate in this deployment. They go in for usually a week to 14 days at a time. They work 12-hour days while they're there, fairly long days. What else could I tell you? We protected 60 properties while they're there, covering over 300 structures. So if you think of a property would have garage and maybe a couple of cabins on it, and I'll show you a couple of pictures of that. We drove about 16,000 kilometers while we were there, because we had a lot of highway to cover and things like that. There's our Comox trailer in the foreground, that's called a Type 2 trailer. These trailers are equipped with high-pressure pumps, over 100 sprinklers in each one, over five kilometers of hose in each trailer, and they're built to a provincial standard. So every trailer is almost identical to what the resource is inside, except for different sized trailers. So the white trailer and red trailer are identical in inventory. The yellow trailer in the background is owned by UBCM, which you guys will be going to in the next little while. UBCM owns, at the beginning of the summer, they owned four of these trailers, which is funded out of revenue that they have. By the end of the summer, they own six on that. We built two more this summer, because there was such a need for them. So basically, they have bigger trailers, about three times the resource of a smaller trailer. So these type of trailers could come to this community. If we would have a big interface fire, we would deploy one of those large trailers or more if we needed it, and some of the smaller trailers. By the way, there's about 20 small trailers in the province right now, and we own one of them. Also, the province pays us for those resources when they forward them or rent them from us, and that revenue will be coming along in the next few months, and we'll talk more about that when that happens. That's the inside of the trailer, basically a big warehouse on wheels. Those smaller trailers would be towed out to the different properties from time to time, depending on the distance and the road network. A lot of the areas we're working in, in the Cariboo area that we're at, the roads were so bad that we had to carry most of the stuff in the pickup trucks and leave the trailers behind. So we just couldn't handle the bad roads. This is one of the properties that we protected. So this is an area called the Precipice, which is about 50 kilometers east of Belacoula. This was the very first property we protected. So when I said we protected 60 properties, this is one property. Single-family homes right here, and the rest of the structures are associated with that property, garages, cabins, greenhouses and so on. This property is an hour and a half off of Highway 20, so in the middle of nowhere. The Tweesmore Provincial Park is just off your slide to the left here. So they're right near Tweesmore Provincial Park, in beautiful setting, kind of like a Paradise Meadows setting, if you think of it locally. And so we would go in with our team and equipment, driving a couple of hours to get in here, set up sprinklers on all these properties, and this would be our water source, the creek here. So we would set up pumps in the creeks, put water on the buildings. And by the way, I'll show you a couple more slides of what's happened here. Today, all that forest is black. Everything here is burnt, with the exception of the houses, the schoolhouses, they're still standing. I couldn't find the slide in time with all the blackness, but everything you see in the background is black today. This is the same house, so this is the house in the foreground here with the fire coming in the background. So ideally, we're going to get there a few days ahead of time and set this stuff up. We'll set it up in such a way that once we fire up our pumps, we can run water for about 12 hours consecutively, so we can fire up pumps, go away, and then come back and check them later. We can't do it for much more than 12 hours, mostly not because of the fuel. We could put more fuel there, but typically the pumps will clog up after a bunch of time. We're stuck in water, it creates some streams and stuff. Sprinklers will clog up and stuff. So our maintenance will be refilling the pumps, cleaning out the hoses and the sprinklers and stuff like that, making sure the system works. The protection on this property was set up for about six weeks. This fire was moving in really, really slow. They couldn't put it out, but it just kept creeping and creeping and creeping. So for six weeks in a row, this was one of our 60 properties we dealt with. This is a map of that property. So that property I just showed you two slides ago, this property is that piece right here. When we first got here, the fire was way down here. The fire is this red line here. This slide was taken August 20th. Today, the fire is way up here. So the fires moved past all these structures, and we're happy to say that they're all protected too. So you'll see red circles around all these things, all the properties are intact, but the forest is all gone. In some cases, this is the source of water we would use. We bring bladders to the locations if they don't have a river, lake, creek or whatever. These are much tougher to protect, obviously, because we have limited water supply. So we'll put a pump on a bladder that's 1500 gallons of water. We can calculate by how many sprinklers we put on the home, how many hours this will last, and then we try to gauge the speed of the fire and when the best time is to turn this on and let it run, sort of thing. Often, in this particular case, one or two I remember, so we'd have phoned in with the helicopter, dropped off, fired up the pumps, and we don't want to be sitting here with the fires coming through. So that's just another example of it. Here's another example, a little bit bigger bladder, that's a 2500 gallon bladder, the same type of situation. And when we see a property like this, we like this type of property much better, because this is a property that is what we call fire smart. Gravel all around the house, you don't have the combustibles around the house that you would see maybe in another house where you've got grass and stuff up against it. So our success rates can be much better in a house like this. One of our key things that we do is protect critical infrastructure. A lot of people think we're there to protect all the houses, but we protect other infrastructure. So in Anaheim, their hydro is produced by a diesel plant there. So one of my first meetings was to meet with the B.C. Hydro Manager there and negotiate with him how we were going to do protection here. You can imagine putting sprinklers on a hydro plant is probably not the brightest thing to do, so we have to come up with other strategies. So in this case, they brought in a faller team, and they took out about five acres of forest, which is right beside them. Fell all the trees, funched them up, moved them out, just moved the fuel away from our site. And then we did put a couple of sprinklers around the perimeter of this site, just to keep any small fires from getting close to it. We also protect bridges, so this is a wooden bridge on Highway 20. So that would be part of what the work we would do. We'd put some sprinklers on there, and again, we would run them when necessary. On the highway, for example, also there'd be a sign here saying, "This is a sprinkler site, Comox Fire Rescue, pumps down at the river," and give instructions for other people to fire this up if they felt it was needed. By the way, this area would be totally evacuated at times, so there's not a lot of traffic here, but certainly critical infrastructure, that this bridge stays in place. And that would be the underneath of the bridge. The guy in the forefront is Jim Rivera, he's a fire inspector, he spent a week up there also. You've got some steel pilings there, but you've got a lot of creosote and a lot of wood structure down there, so of course, if that catches on fire, it could be a big problem. A lot of beautiful cabins. This was a lodge called Clear Lake Lodge. This was a property extended down here with many more cabins. We have one pump down in the lake here with 24 sprinklers on it, off of one pump, protecting this whole structure or this whole site with the one pump. Our team would go in there, it would take us probably half a day to do the right setup on something like this by the time we put sprinklers all over the house. The other thing we'll do, you can see the tools in the foreground, is use the rakes and shovels to move some of the fuels around. So we want to protect our equipment. For example, here's our water source, the lake. You can see a pump down there. We have a sprinkler on the dock there to protect the dock from catching on fire and also to stop our hose from burning. Because if any of the grass fires come along there and burn down the hose, well, then we're out of business also. So they're all things we've done for the years. That's just another view of the same property. And that's another map of a different fire. The fire I showed you earlier is about 70 kilometers up there. These are two other fires that Comox also looked after. This is called the Kena-Kene Fire and the Colwell Road Fire. This yellow line, you can hardly see here, is the highway. So you can see the red fire line came right up to the highway here. The cabins I just showed you were on this lake here. So you can see how close the fire got to some of these properties. And this, of course, would be dated, but quite a while. Stuff you really don't need to know. But other things on here, these are fire guards that forestry has put in, these little checker things here. And this blue line here is what we call a trigger line for evacuations. If the fire reaches that point, in a new area, it will be evacuated. So they would talk to local government and recommend that we evacuate downstream, whatever the next community was, and so on. That's a picture of fires on the lake. So you imagine if you own those properties, you're a bit nervous. This is another type of mapping we use. That earlier slide I showed you, that beautiful metal box, this house here, the other properties I showed you are there. Highway 20 is here, and we protected all these properties all the way down here, and that's about a 200 kilometer drive from Point A to Point B down here. And we would do that drive every day, pretty much. While we were there, we got the opportunity to work in the Anaheim village with the First Nations Reserve there, called Natchaco. They had a small fire department that were a little bit under what I call undernourished, not much equipment, not much training. So we spent a few days with a couple of our people, working with them to train. And the ideal there is we wanted to make sure that they could put out spot fires if they came into their community, that the fire was threatened to come through this village and take the village out, sort of thing. So we needed to have this apparatus available to be able to put out these small spot fires before they came to be of greater concern. When done correctly, that's what kind of the aftermath of what we do looks like, so everything burns, except for the stuff we keep wet. So the theory is wet fuel won't burn. So it does work really well, but there's a lot of things that can go wrong in our business. We could run out of fuel, we can break hoses, pumps fail and so on. Actually, one of the sad stories I should tell you about this whole thing is toward my last few days there, the evacuation order was lifted in this area, Tatla Lake, I don't know if you know those areas, Kena-Kene and Anaheim. We had, under my direction, we had over 40 pumps on the ground protecting these properties. We had three pumps stolen in the last couple of days I was there, once the evacuation order was lifted. So the people are coming back in the areas, and all of a sudden, equipment's going missing. So it's unfortunate. The pumps we use are worth about $6,000 each. And as I mentioned, on the highway, we put big signs saying, "Pump down this way." So if you're a bad guy looking for a pump, it's almost too easy. That's some of the bad side. On the plus side, we get to meet a lot of nice people and so on. And by the way, a lot of these residents are still in these homes. They don't evacuate, even though they've been ordered to evacuate, they don't leave. One of the cute sidebar stories to this is that we had at least two or three families that would give a shopping list every two or three days and ask us, "Look, here's a list. When you come back, three days from now, bring us some milk and eggs." Because if they left their homes, they couldn't come back. If they got through the roadblocks, they weren't allowed back in the area. So they'd give us 50 bucks and tell us to go get their stuff. And we would do that, because we're coming back there anyway. At the end of this, there's lots of cleanup. So that would be the hose from about maybe four or five properties, we had 50 or 60 properties. So all that stuff would get washed, cleaned, back in the trucks. And a fair bit of loss too, we would lose some stuff. In fact, in one case, one of the pumps got burnt out, you know, $6,000 pump gets destroyed and so on. And that's about it in a nutshell. I mean, I could go on all night or all day, but just another picture of it. In closing, I'll take some questions in a moment, but I'd like to say that we can't do this without our volunteer firefighters assisting us. We also can't do it without CEO Richard Canigan supporting it and council or mayor supporting us. You know, we have to be able to have everybody on site to be able to do this type of thing. It's a big challenge for a community, any community, to do this, but the rewards are many. I think on the reward side is we come back with a lot more experience. We have a lot of our members, you know, get experience in other communities. We're going to bring back a little bit of revenues to the community. And then more importantly, if this ever happens in Comox, we're ready for it, and we can expect other people to come and help us. So we're ready to vote.
Well, thanks for keeping it under two hours. Mr. Mayoral? Any questions? We'll see you tomorrow. Questions? Members of council? Lieutenant Counselor.
Just thank you for the presentation, Gordy. What your department does, I'm not sure the public appreciates it as much as they should. I'm wondering if this story, which is so compelling, you might be able to tell us service flows or whatnot.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do so. As I said, there's lots of sidebar stories to this too, wildlife that we want to do, lots of funny stories along the way. And as I mentioned, there's 100 departments that participated, including locally here the Court and Fire Department, Oyster River Department, all in different roles. Oyster River sent fire engines, we sent a different resource, but important roles they played too. But yeah, I look forward to doing that.
We've got a volunteer fire department, and they take seven days to two weeks away. I assume some of these people at least have other jobs. How's that all working? Do they get paid when we go on these trips?
They do. So good question, and thank you for that. They do get paid. So we get paid by the province for doing this, and we get paid fairly well. So as I mentioned, there'll be some revenue coming back to the community. In 2003, we got a fair bit of revenue coming back, and we talked as a group of how to use that, and the same thing will happen. So yes, these guys get their wages replaced, more or less, and a lot of them are taking time off, and it's a bit complicated. I think I mentioned, we went for 50 days, and I eventually had to pull our team out. We just ran out of gas, so to speak, and we just couldn't find more people to go back in and take over from us. And a small department called BX Swan Lake near Vernon took over from us, and they're there today as we speak, they're still there. So if Comox would have hung in there, it'd still be there, another three weeks. So we ended up having to give it up, you know, running out of holidays and running out of energy and time and so on. But we certainly made a big contribution. The firefighters are paid, they get paid a 12-hour day, and most of the days are 12 hours or longer. And then they're expected to be on call 100% of the time while they're there. So for example, we may get a call from the Inst. Commander of our large fires saying, "Go start your sprinklers up at 8 o'clock at night, 150 kilometers up from where we are." So we get to drive that distance, fire up pumps, and it's a bit sketchy sometimes, and so those are the way your days shake up. And by the way, there's no drugs or alcohol involved. If one person on your team has a drink of beer or something like that, the whole team goes home while you're on these deployments. So very organized, they're very strict, and they should be. My days, for example, would start at 7 o'clock in the morning with a command meeting, where we'd meet with the command teams. You'd have the Inst. Commander, maybe somebody in charge of the forestry crews, somebody in charge of the helicopters, and we'd kind of put a shopping list together for the day. Does my group need a helicopter today? What do we need? And then at night, we'd have an 8:30 ops meeting. So 7 o'clock in the morning, 8:30 be, and then you go to bed and do the game. 14 days in a row.
And so, now I understand you guys, Comox, Gordy, you flew out there through the wing, 19 wing they transported you?
Yeah.
So was this like a hub that other fire departments came up here?
No. No, the whole transportation story was a bit complicated, and a bit longer story, but feel very with me is that, as I mentioned, I was in Williams Lake originally, and they phoned me up and said, "Do you want to go to Belacoula?" And I kind of said, "Yeah, you know, just assumed they would." It was like for the two weeks, right? And then they said, "Well, we're sending the Comox team there." And I said, "Well, that's a long way for them." And they said, "No, the military's sitting at the desk of Canada to organize all this, and they have a Hercules aircraft in Comox, and they're going to fly you there." So I said, "Okay, well, I'll go work with the Comox team." It seemed like a good fit. So our team went by Hercules. It was a bit complicated, there's lots of side stories to that, but we were the only team that went that way. Courtney drove. Courtney ended up in Williams Lake for their first deployment, and then they went to the Clinton fire for their second deployment. West River went to 150 Mile House for their deployment. But I think we were probably the only municipal department that went by military, and it's just a natural connection. You know, so flying in Belacoula, if anybody's ever been there, it's a challenge. You know, it's a tough airport, foggy, smoky, you know, so half the flights didn't work for whatever reason.
Counselor Swett.
Amazing work that you do in the fire department, makes me very proud. I'm just curious about, are there, do you try and save every structure, or are there some prioritized criteria?
Great questions. And my job is to what we call triage, is to prioritize. And I can tell you, I've been doing this for many years. So originally, what we would do is we would prioritize based on value of the home and the success of maybe saving it. Over the years, we've learned that we pretty much have to try to save everything, because what we've learned is that whether we see a million-dollar lodge like we've seen there or a hundred-dollar cabin, they're very important to both families. So we try, now we do our prioritization or the triage based more on our success level, water supply in the neighborhood and things like that. So sometimes we'll go in and say, "You know what? Too much fuel around the house, not enough water around the house, just can't..." And the other thing we look at is escape zones or safety zones for our people. Can we get in there, fire up our stuff and get out without, you know, getting caught in fire? So we look at those type of things, and we would kind of rate those things, and then we may go back to camp and say, we call it a red rock house. We just put a red rock in the driveway, so if you ever see that in your house, it's probably a bad sign.
Or a good sign.
Yeah. And by the way, we do have some people say, "Don't bother saving my house." But generally speaking, we try to save as much as we can. When we're on a big property like the ones we've seen, we may go through there, and it may have 12 structures, we might cross out a couple and not put sprinklers on them. For example, outhouses, which everybody up here has, we may not sprinkle the outhouses, they're easier to replace than say that single-family home, or the greenhouse or other things. In the village of Anaheim, when I went there, we met with the band manager and the First Nations Chief, and we asked them to pick their list of their top 10 or 15 places that they thought were priorities for them, rather than us picking them. And so that's how that worked out. They picked a bunch of random places, some that I wouldn't have picked. For example, they took teachers' housing, nurses' housing, graveyard they want to protect it, you know, things like that, which probably wouldn't have been on my list, but some of them were obvious, like band offices and community halls and medical centers and schools and stuff like that.
Thank you.
Counselor.
When you first began speaking, Gord, I was thinking, I wonder what kind of measure of success you would have with all of the area that you're covering? Are you able to determine exactly?
Yes, yeah. Well, yeah, and so the success is measured by the houses standing. So in the 60 properties that we dealt with, when we left on August 26th, they were all still standing.
Really?
100%, yeah. Now, I can't speak to the last couple of weeks because I haven't been there, so I haven't heard of anything going sideways. But I will tell you a kind of a negative story about this. On the middle of July, I was sent to an area called Pressey Lake. Pressey Lake is north of Clinton. There was a small fire that started north of Pressey Lake. It was a four-hect acre fire that sent me in to do the triage of 40 cabins on the lake. So I went in and took pictures of the cabins, did my triage stuff, and kind of make a recipe for what resources we need, how many trailers we're going to need, how many trucks we're going to need, and so on. Forestry that evening determined that the fire was contained. The fire was not a threat anymore. So they sent us off to a different fire. So I ended up going to the Clinton fire from there. Three weeks later, the Clinton fire got so large, it took out those cabins at Pressey Lake. So those cabins are all gone. I seen on the news last week, they're showing pictures of these cabins burnt down, and I'm looking at my iPad going, "Did it? Did it? Did it?" You know, we were there. We were there three weeks ago, but the fire that was a threat at that time is a different fire. So those things happen.
I have to imagine, this is what you could have.
And you know, it is the whole nature of fire. Which direction is it going, which speed is it going? It's just so annoying. And sparks will go a kilometer or two in front of the fire. And that's one of the scary things, going into that large property that we looked at earlier there, you know, an hour and a half up the highway through a fourth road. If you're in there with your head down, working, and the sparks are going on top of your head, you could have your road on fire behind you. So we were comfortable that place, because acres of green space and creeks and waters, and we could survive there if we had to. So you have to be very careful. Often, when we're in situations like that too, that have a helicopter in the air, kind of keep an eye on us, so that's extra safety.
Yeah, just one last question. Communications. So did you have everything you needed there, or are there things that you would have brought?
Our first few weeks were terrible. We had one satellite phone to share between many resources, and that was sketchy at the best of times. Most of the radio communication, we have Office of the Fire Commissioner radio channels, but it's all minus, no repeaters in this particular area. in this particular area. So that was terrible. About three, four weeks in, they put repeaters up and fixed the problem, but it took a long time to get there. So that's something we want to look at in the future, is how can we improve better. Our team, the best form of communication we had was Canadian terror walkie-talkies, you know. We were using those a lot, and that seemed to be the best method. We would do things on the highway, for example, with all the trucks. Somebody was going down the driveway or down a dirt road, and they would drop a pile on the highway to indicate that there's a truck down there, so other guys coming by would know that. Zero cell service here, you know. And the people I was working for, the Office of Fire Commissioner, had a hard time understanding that. I would send them an email once a night when I could find a Wi-Fi hotspot, give them an update for the day, and I would put on my email, "No cell service." Yet, when I hit Vancouver on the way out of this job, I got twenty-five voice messages from the OFC asking for information and stuff. Of course, the phone's not ringing up there. They're going like, "Why aren't you answering your phone?" Well, it's not ringing. It just doesn't work. Communication's a big deal.
So Gord, what's the state today of all these fires? If we're still under the standard of emergency?
Yes, the province is still under the standard of a fifteen. Most of the fires in the northern part of the province, the Caribou, are a hundred percent contained or close to that. The Hansonville Fire, which is very large near Williams Lake, wasn't any of these three, but another one on the same caribou was declared a hundred percent contained today. As we move south, less containment, especially in the southern Kootenay area. And as you probably know, Alberta is suffering now in the Waspin area. So everything's kind of moved south, which was predicted. These guys got it figured out. They predicted this was going to happen. You know, we're getting rain in New York, colder nights, and so on.
So what does contained actually mean? Does that mean out, or does that mean no longer spreading?
No. And it's another good question. Out, if you listen to the stories on Fort Mac, they declared the Fort Mac Fire out about a month ago, and that was eighteen months after it started. So these fires will be about the same. You know, there's many of these fires, there's hundreds of them, but these fires won't be out until at least a month of snow. You know, that's what's going to put these out. It won't be the firemen that put these out. But contained is having either fire guard, natural boundaries around it, or what they call wet line all around it. So they've done, they contain the fire into a circle.
So it's not spreading anymore?
Exactly. It won't spread. But to get inside of a, you know, ten-hect acre fire or thousand, or ten thousand-hect acre fire, and get all those little hot spots, all the roots that are burning, and it just takes forever. And it's dangerous work, too, by the way, to go into those black spots, and you could get yourself hurt, too. So it'll take some, a lot of rain and some snow to have these all. And then unfortunately, they could do this again next year.
Yeah. Gord, just one quick question about the wildlife. So many of our discussions here at home, of course, obviously, you felt our waves, I'm sure, can hear across the ocean, you will. But the wildlife?
Well, terrible on the wildlife. And a big issue for us people, too, because you can imagine, this shot is probably a good example of that. Our guys are working on the edge of the lake there, putting sprinklers up, and where's the wildlife coming? It's coming out of that fire toward the lake. So we're seeing a lot of bears and large animals show up at the lakes, looking at us going like, "What are you guys doing here?" So we encountered quite a few bears, you know, other things. And hunting up here has been restricted now for the fall, and a lot of these areas are shutting down the hunting because the wildlife is all dysfunctional. And some of it would have died through the perish in these fires, you know, just because of the confusion and being trapped and so on.
Well, good story. Thank you again for your presentation. Thanks to all the crew for all the hard work. One question I had was, including the wear and tear that...
I forgot to do that one.
Okay, yeah, I saw, I was going to ask you that. Did Jim LaRiviere get that coveted artifact?
Yes. Yeah, Jim LaRiviere took his picture. Jim is a Montreal fan, as is near eyes. So we drove by this sign, and I hit the brakes really hard, and said, "Jim, you gotta get out and take a picture of this sign." And that is the hometown of Perry Price, a Montreal Canadian goalie, so.
Hope you didn't sprinkle that sign.
So wear and tear, obviously, on the equipment, you know, lots of cars and vehicles, all the oozes and so on. How does that, that go within compensation?
Yes, it's compensated fairly well. So there's a rental rate for the trailer, which is fairly handsome, and that includes two pickup trucks typically. We supply one for the fire department, which is one of our day-to-day ones, and we rented one to make that work. Then they pay us a kilometer mileage fee, and they pay eighty cents a kilometer for the use of the vehicle, which is very handsome. So that will identify or help us on minor repairs and things like that. But at the end of the day, we're going to be in pretty good shape financially and have an opportunity to move forward with some other stuffs.
All right. Please pass on our thanks to the rest of your crew.
Thank you.
All right. So we have other items on the agenda to discuss under staff reports. We have the permissive tax exemptions report and a recommendation that the committee support the first, second, and third reading, and report to council.
I'll move that.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Yeah, just to direct your, I ask, on some of these, for example, churches, do we have to give them tax exemption? Is it some VC legislation?
Yes, they're statutory, they exempt, but those are the property and the benefit. And then we come along with a permissive exemption and pick up the rest of the area of land that's directly related to the corporation's purposes.
I see.
And that's what we're doing with this permissive exemption. Churches, churches are statutory, they exempt.
Okay. And the other question, then, with St. John's Hospital, St. Joseph's Hospital, does that change now that it's moving away from hospital status?
I think the report is, it's all dependent on how it's assessed, right? So assessment will continue up until 2018 as hospital. And after that, it will depend on the use. Of course, there still will be standard care facilities there.
Okay, what they're useful.
Your order. The cutoff is October thirty-first. Until October thirty-first, it would be under its current occupation use, which is hospitals, so in 2018, it's hospital. So there's a cutoff of October thirty-first. So if the use changes after October thirty-first, it's still going to be exempt under a permissive exemption. You know what the future is going to be, but for the purpose of 2018 tax year, it is considered hospital, et cetera.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor. Any opposed? Motion's carried. The next item is the, it's only file amendments proposed for the ten minutes.
The recommendation one.
That's the first and second reading. Of course, I would have to go to Counselor next week.
Okay.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor.
Number two.
Thank you. I started probably carrying October fourth. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Motion's carried. All right, moving on to the sidewalk on Beaufort Staff that provided a report as a result of a submission.
I'll move that.
The recommendations, you're moving both of them? There was a scenario one and a scenario two in there.
Yeah, there, well, there's, there's the recommendation that we consider the replacement of the sidewalk in frontage with a concrete sidewalk in the financial plan, further than the interim on street parking along the frontage be removed, et cetera. So the question was, are you moving both of those?
Well, I really just wanted to open this up for discussion and see what people had to say first. So I guess what I'm doing is moving one.
I'm moving.
I'm just moving the first one.
The first one is considering the replacements. So we'll move that, and then Counselor, you had the question about which one we're doing.
Yeah, well, okay, then, I like option one, as the Public Works Director states there. If we, if we did go with option one, and then down the road, and when we do the work on Beaufort, that's not going to be ripping that up again, because I was wondering if we went with the asphalt. Then if it's going to be ripped up in a couple of years, we might as well take the cheaper route. It will stay the same?
Correct. Yeah, that's why I recommended the aggregate concrete, because that would be permanent. If we put down the asphalt as a temporary, that would be ripped up with a future upgrade.
Yeah. All right, go ahead.
So have we got any timeframe for when this is, when that road is going to be realigned? And have we got some concept of what it's going to look like?
Twenty twenty-one.
Is it twenty twenty-one? And do we know what it's going to, do we know what we're doing with that, or are we kind of flying by to see if our pants have been here?
The five-year plan is in 2021 for the design of the upgrade of Beaufort with sidewalks, shared bike lanes. It'll be eleven-meter-wide road with parking on both sides, three-meter drive-al. So it'll be per our transportation engineering standards for that cross-section of that road.
So I'm trying to just get in my head how this would work. So what we would do is take the current crosswalk that's by Tascano and move it closer to the building?
This cost, sorry, yeah.
Because we're, it seems that we're trying to widen that. You could widen it that side quite a bit easier than moving everything. That's what I'm trying to get to here.
So this cost estimate is just looking at the improvements on the south side, just from just the exact...
We're talking about this particular area, we're not talking about the whole resource part.
Yeah, no, you know, I get that. But what I'm looking at is this whole, this whole area here. Eventually, we're going to move that sidewalk over. Would it not be easier to just widen the road here?
You don't have the property.
Okay, we don't own that. Okay, maybe that's the question.
You're talking about the work this money is to design?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just, I, like, I just don't want to have us put this in and then change our minds sometimes later and then rip it out. That's all I'm thinking of. And if we don't have a design...
I believe Shelley's quite confident with the alignment on this side, so that's why she's just hesitant to be referred to the budget process for next year. She's unclear about what's going to happen on this side. So if the works were to be done on that side, she might not be as confident.
We'll be clear on which sides you're talking later.
I'm talking about the gravel portion in front of the black pit, yeah, in the area.
It's so sad.
That's the side she's confident with. The other side is, they're still trying to figure out which is the Tascano side.
Yes. All right. Question, question, question. Yeah, so I sit on the BIA, and I did run this by Ed Moyes, and I asked what he thought about it. And he does think that, you know, it does make sense to clean this up. Doesn't really want to lose any parking there, but I think we, any of us who drive by there in the middle of the day, it can get quite congested in that area. So I think it's a good proposal.
Okay.
Is the eventual plan to side one all the way up Beaufort?
On the, on the both sides of Beaufort, yes.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Because I thought, for something, because I thought, I don't go for gate very much, just doing that one piece of sidewalk. But if it's eventually going to run all the way down, I think it maybe makes more sense.
Counselor Margaret.
Thank you. I guess I was looking at it a different way, because I see this coming to the table now as a, as a good timing, because from what I understand, we still have four years until we reach the designing stage in 2021. And this is a really important intersection in our town. And I wonder if we need time to assess the influence of our new Marina Park that's going to have on both the pedestrian and the vehicle traffic. And that in turn could also influence the design of this intersection. We don't know what's going to happen down there right now, given the measure of success that we've seen. Whoa, it could influence it quite a bit. So that's one thought. And another thought that I had is, again, having to do with change, and that is, I guess I'm learning a little bit more about urban watershed and such, and considering both the design time of four years and the influence of our park, and also how we handle that urban watershed, I'm wondering if there might be an option three that we could talk about. And that would be to one, of course, if we would establish the no parking zone there, but putting a curvaceous surface for the sidewalk in the curve, so that it would still help our pedestrian traffic, it'll help the vehicle traffic that we're concerned about. But it would be easy to remove, and we could have a, then, still time to do our permanent design in 2021.
Nordeus purpose.
Nordeus purpose.
Or whatever.
It is curvaceous now, yes, right, it is indeed. But you'd want something perhaps that would be a little more connected. And that sidewalk right now ends, doesn't it? It may in 2021 go all the way along Beaufort, but right now, I don't know. It feels, it feels like it needs another thought.
We're trying to maybe do too many things here on this recommendation. This is, this report's been generated because we got a letter from Wendy saying, Wendy Prother saying there's an issue here, because she saw one person walking here having difficulty. And so staff have been asked to provide a cost estimate of what could be done. The other work, whether that happens in 2021 or earlier, is still to be determined. So we don't necessarily need to decide all that today, and in fact, we don't need to decide anything today. This is suggesting we consider this replacement in our financial plan discussions. So we wouldn't be doing anything to proceed with this work until it's put in our budget. There's no money in this year's budget to do it, and there's no money in the current financial plan allocated. So all we're saying is, let's consider this. This matter could, is essentially being referred to the financial plan discussion, which we'll have the other year. The second aspect of the recommendation is talking about interim measure about removing the street parking, which we can have a further discussion on. So I don't know if that helps. We're not deciding to do anything other than refer it to financial planning, right?
Oh.
We're not actually doing this, because we don't have any money in our budget yet, until we actually turn our minds to that. This is more of, okay, what do you think? And what could be done possibly? So there's no harm in referring it to the budget process, because that's essentially what the first motion does. Second motion would be more immediate, if that's possible. So in regards to the first motion is moved, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion's carried.
And then I'll move number two.
Second to that. This is on the interim measure of removing the on-street parking.
Can I ask any questions, Gord? Do you want to...
Second is the...
Yeah, okay, I'll second it.
Go ahead.
Yeah. So, so if we went with number two, in the interim, that means we're providing no parking there.
We'd be putting up some signs.
Yeah, and we'd be having a gravel sidewalk leading to really nowhere along Beaufort, so it wouldn't make any sense that we changed that, to me. We're just removing a couple parking spots, but we're, now we're providing a sidewalk that doesn't go further east.
All that we would be doing is putting up a couple of parking signs that say, "Cat Parker," you know.
Yeah.
It suggests we're having asphalt sidewalk there.
Nope, that's a different option.
That scenario, too? Is that not what you mean?
No, no, it's part two of our recommendation.
The second recommendation is saying, remember, we just referred the whole discussion of replacing this gravel sidewalk to financial planning. This is saying, in the meantime, put up no parking sign.
Yeah. So what I did was I took that recommendation appropriate to you, right? So that's why, that's the confusion.
Yeah. Let's ask another question. So we've had one complaint. Have we heard any other concerns here? I mean, are we just jumping at this a little too?
A little bit, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm not in favor of this being interpreted. I just think...
Why should we?
Okay, well, let's do it one at a time here.
Go ahead.
I'm assuming if we take away any more parking while here, there'll be a lot more people. I'm not in favor.
Okay. Anybody on the side?
Well, I'm parked there right now, so it could be...
Can't build up there now.
Well, I'm okay now, where people put aside now.
Yeah.
And it just seems that doing this all as part of the design work when the road improvement happens, you know, Counselor Grant made some good points about looking to other types of, you know, curvaceous surfaces. And we sort of blocked it in when, in the motor we passed, but just say concrete.
No, it doesn't...
What we just moved...
No, which is that we're going to consider the replacement, and we haven't confirmed that we're going to do it.
It says consider it with a concrete sidewalk, yeah. But I mean, it's considering in general.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that is the recommended scenario, but that doesn't mean that's what we have to do. And of course, it's subject to budget, and we may decide, you know what, we're not going to be spending thirty grand now on something that might be wasted later.
And that it's probably cheaper to do it all as one project than to come in and do it short stretch.
It may be important to do it earlier than 2021, in which case we'll have to do the budget numbers around it. Yeah. So the motion on the floor is regarding the second recommendation and further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor. All those above?
It's the...
We go. So we'll come back to it in the financial plan discussion. It'll appear probably as a line item at some point in the budget, and then we can look at it from there and see where it comes out in the wash. All right, so that leaves that one for the budget. And then on to the next item, which is, I would receive a budget software customization for information.
Second, let me see.
All right, any further discussion? Go ahead.
Well, it's funny, because when Clyde first got here after the shock of walking into his office and seeing the desk floor, and this was one of the things I asked him about, and he played a bit coy, and he just said, "Yeah," something he knew a little bit about. But I had no idea that he was actually doing this, so very timely.
Okay, yeah.
All right, and next, yeah. Yeah, so, and I understand that you won't be, we won't be charged for the program, but we will be for the hourly rate. Would we be estimating how many hours are we looking at this thing to be, to take to be installed?
Finance manual. Yep. It'll be quite dependent on how much I change my chart of accounts versus making things intact. If I leave everything intact, there'll be more hours. You know, so overall for the implementation and follow-up, it could be as high as ten thousand dollars, as low as a few, under a thousand, you know, a thousand dollars, depending just how it's going to be done. So I haven't actually started on the review of the chart of accounts for Beaufort, but if it is, if we're going to keep the chart of accounts exactly as it is, it takes more customization and need to put the software. I guess it's where the varies, just depending on once I get into it, what we want to...
Yeah, so that's, wait to stand on that. Now, how will this make it better than what the previous Director of Finance was providing us?
This is a more interactive tool for the managers to have their own budgets at their desktops, so they will be actually preparing their own budget. I have a control panel that, as they are preparing a budget, it summarizes it for presentation to council and any decisions that you may, may or may, as I key it back into, the control panel pushes it back to the department. So when the budget is completed, what they have on their, on their desktops is exactly what's being approved, so they see exactly what's going on. So it's just a matter of, a higher collaborative tool that we'll be using as opposed to a single workbook that only the CFO is actually handling and working on. Recordings are, reports are a little bit more, well, the recording is right there for the managers, so they can see the budget variance at any time according to their budget tool. So it's a tool that's, the number of other municipalities have purchased, they have called it Tumler Ridge, it's just going through implementation through, this happens to be related to, and that's why I wanted to let you know that. Central Sandwich is using the tool. We've got some earlier versions of it. So it's just something that's been developed over many years.
Okay, and I have, thank you, I have one last question now. You would be, you wouldn't be charging us for this package, only the hourly rate, too. So what would the normal charge for that package be?
It's like municipality, forty, fifty thousand dollars.
Oh. All right. Thank you.
There's also, thanks for that, there's no annual support for it.
There's also, thanks for that, there's no annual support for it, although that would be $4,000, $4,000 always to be annual support, that's why.
$4,000.
$4,000 per year. So it's just for a customization of what happens to your unique chart of accounts. Counselor Swift.
I'm just curious, Richard, about the, you consulted with the wire road of possible conflict interest, and is it simply because there's no charge, that it's not looked upon as a conflict interest?
That, in fact, that it's residual doing the programming, we'll be building the town directly, so there's no, there's no enrichment to our director finance.
Okay, anything further, seeing none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Okay, we'll move to the planning reports on the costs of some family. Are we receiving? Second. Seeing none, all those in favor? Planner is here, if there's any questions, it's here.
Want me to go? So, well, I kind of. So when I add up all our costs, not all of the costs, I'm trying to refer to the costs that you would be charged by the town or the regional district, it seems to me to come to about $17,000. Is that a fair number?
The total cost that in the report is anywhere from $54, $60,000, essentially $60,000 to $80,000 per lot, plus applicable housing costs, adaptable housing costs, building, construction costs, road dedication, land costs.
Yeah, but while we're looking, I'm not thinking of the pipes and the roads and all that, I'm just thinking about what we, you walk into our town, what are our costs? I know I got to put pipes and sidewalks and roads in, but what do we charge for what we do? And that, if I add that up correctly, it seems like about $17,000? I mean, all it's, it looks to me like a lot cost by the time you add anything, it's about $160,000. Probably adding some costs that you haven't thought of. I happen to know that they're real, and they're there, so.
The, I guess the only way to answer that is, yeah, if we're looking at the application fee costs.
Yeah.
Per lot, then, yeah, you're $581, maybe contributions, costs, $772, and those alone are $1,300 a lot.
So, yeah, so I guess what I'm trying to get at is, the amount that we add to the price of a lot is about $17,000, $15,000 to $17,000.
Give me that ballpark.
And of course, you know, the big deal to anyone who's doing land development, because they got to put their land costs in, they got to actually build the things, you've got commission costs when you sell them, you've got financing costs, all of those things that I actually added in, but the real key for most of them is the time. You know, how long does it take you to get through the system? You know, the one thing that they really want to do is get through the system in the same market they went into it in, right? And so that can really mess up the formula for them if it takes too long, I guess is. I guess the message for me is the cost is one piece, and it's a lot, but I think they're more worried about how long it takes to get through.
Yes, I totally agree, and I think that from the feedback, we've been very clear in talking with developers, our mandate is, that we understand it from council, is clearly establish what the rules are, and then if an application comes in that meets those rules, get it out as soon as possible, and advise them that council has set the target timelines, and we report on them, we report on them to council, and we have been meeting and meeting those to date. And that does resonate very well with the development industry.
I think our timelines since we started that process have been a lot better, and I think we've been, for the most part, meeting, so I think that's, in terms of that, it's good. The issue is that we haven't had very many subdivisions come before us, so we haven't been burdened with a lot of them to do yet, but how was that going to play out if, say, all of a sudden, or if one were to come on at the same time, that would stretch that timeframe out, that would assume.
Extensively depending on, I mean, so much of it depends, like, right now, we're doing a lot of infill council projects, and then we've got a small number of rezoning, sorry, subdivision applications. If we were to maintain that level and have Northeast Comox and the subdivision bylaw rewrite off, we could handle a lot of stuff.
Okay, fair enough.
So it's, it really depends on the workload race that's coming forward to us.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I just, I'd just like to comment, I think I was the one that asked for a report, and I appreciate getting this information, and, oh, it's expensive to know a lot before you even get a house. Thank you.
I note there's a reference to the CBRD U R, and sewer DCC is being increased in the near future, and there's been some discussion on that, so those are items that are also included in the list. On page 41, that $3,700 a lot for water and almost $6,000 for sewer. We all know what's coming down the pipe, or pipes there. Anyway, that's just something that is the cost of doing business, and I suppose housing affordability aspects are a concern. Those are some definite costs that get passed on to ultimate purchasers.
So if someone was doing a one lot infill site, they would have reduced costs, would they, would they pay for the plant, open space, or would that be a certain amount of lots before that?
If that's the top finding, it's create, it gets four more lots, so the typical splitting of a lot doesn't generate a requirement. Also, once the land has been charged in the part line requirement, subsequent subdivisions of the same land.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I just thought, I think we've already voted on that, so if there's further questions, we can move on to the next, and thank you for the report. Cross that off the management report. All right, next one is the mobile food vending guide, recommendations from the CEO that the draft provisions be approved, of course, committee, going with council, and the business license bylaw, Parks and Public Places bylaw, the amendment to incorporate those provisions. Move that. Discussion, go ahead.
So just in here, I wasn't 100% clear on all of this, so is there a site map of where you can park in certain areas, like, you know, down the park there, I think, I'd like to see us over on this side, for example, I didn't see any provision for that, or if you're at Point Oaks, for example, are there areas you would allow in the park and have it included?
Page 53, is it?
Page 53 with some stars on it.
But are those the actual locations where they would say, this is where you could, like, I thought those stars were just saying you can have one down in the park.
Both sides of the park are noted there, and on the breakwater. So you're looking for something more specific?
Well, yeah, I mean, I guess the discussion has been about the fish and chip shop being not in a very good location, and it would be better on the other side of the park, in my opinion.
It could very well be there.
I could be wrong, but if we, so I guess that's what I'm getting at, is could we, could we do that?
I guess, or is the CEO opening minutes it up?
So my intent was that the maps be in the guide that is provided be general in terms of the town is open to vending units.
Yeah.
At this park, at this park, you know, but just to be general in the guide, and then when applications come in, the intent would be that the applicants work with staff to come up with a lawsuit.
All right, fair enough. Fair enough, so there is a provision in there to do that?
Yeah, and page 49 also references the locations, Raina Park adjacent to the west part of London, Twin Sail Buildings in Long Promenade, Raina Park near the Twin Sail Buildings, I suppose, and I want to say along the east side, and then High Bay and so on.
Right, okay. The other question that I had was, in here somewhere, you, I'm just wondering, is there a possibility of getting one vending license that we could use for the entire ballot, like maybe basic, or you could, as long as you go by the rules of Courtney, Cumberland or Regional District, that you could get one that just does it all, rather than having to run around and get three different ones, four different ones?
No, I mean, there is, of course, intermunicipal business license, but that's different. I don't think you could necessarily do this intermunicipally unless perhaps all three jurisdictions got together on that, but I don't know what you think, CEO, if I could see it.
I think that would be a level of complexity that we're not ready for. Simply because I think the city itself has different standards around vending than what we're proposing.
Okay.
So I think there could just be a conflict there.
Maybe overtime. Alser Swift, in her.
I'm looking at the permitted locations, and I know at one time, the Felberg group was considering trying to tie some food truck onto the property. They are temporary, but if, if they wanted to, could they? Should we add them to the permitted locations, or should we just leave it alone?
Staff will refer to on that, I guess that's a question.
The guide will be part of the bylaw.
The guide will not be part of the bylaw.
So we can amend the guide easily enough.
If there's demand for it.
Yeah, so if the Felberg was interested, then we could amend this and include the Felberg part.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, go to this side.
I had a question.
Oh, yeah, Counselor Knox.
Yeah, so, following up with Counselor Grant's question about the Twin Sail Building, perhaps we could have a little more specific that, on that side, we could still have a mobile food vendor, but it would be like a little ice cream unit instead of a big trailer there, because I think we've all seen the trailer, yeah, it's been very popular over the summer, but it also congests that area. In addition, the fee that we were, we were looking at, have we, are we going to revisit that for next year? Because I believe we're charging $50 a day. I talked to the over-the-top turkey fellow, and he thought that was over-the-top, $50 a day. But I think, I think it worked for the one person that Fish and Chips, because they had everybody, now when you split that up, you have two, maybe three, then there's less customers, less money they're making, the $50 a day's impacting, so I did ask him to come and speak to you, I don't know if he did, but, so there's something that we could flesh out a bit, and I did.
Sorry, what are you, what are you getting at? You think it should be less?
Well, I just want to see if we can, if we can talk to some of the users. I want to bring this to the VIA, I have a meeting on the 26th, I've already, I've already sent them a copy of it. I'd like to get their input as well, but yeah, there is some people out there saying that $50 a day is too much. Now, I talked to a fellow in Victoria yesterday, he said $50 a day is pretty reasonable, but now you've got a bigger customer base down there.
Yeah, it's a fine balancing act between, you know, charging them something so that there is a, there is a payment and there's an obligation.
But we don't.
Not giving them a total free ride.
Exactly.
And, you know, I know there was some initial squawking by the fish and chip trailer about that, but I don't think that meant it would be further than that.
But again, if we have two or three down there, we have less customers, so maybe it would impact the fish and chips, it would.
You could have more customers, right? Because if you have more than they are, right?
Yeah, I think also, I'll go ahead.
Counselor Bryce, with your question.
So I know at the present moment, the fish and chip guy has tables and chairs down there, and they're always packed full of people, and I noticed in this it's saying that tables and chairs won't be allowed. Has it been a problem, or is it use of public space that's a concern? Does seem that people enjoy those facilities.
The Parks Department has recently placed several picnic tables throughout the park, which I believe could serve that purpose. Some of the comments we've heard from the tables and chairs setup where they are, is that the restaurant community is starting to think that you're now in direct competition because it is somewhat acting like a restaurant. So if you disperse the tables throughout, people can either choose to find a table in the park, which there are several, or they can choose to sit on the bench, or they can go and stand and look over the water. We're not eliminating the seating, we're just spreading it out, and that's why we've suggested removing the tables and chairs.
And I think what I've heard from some people is the concern around exclusivity is it becomes the fish and chip place, and that, you know, nobody else can sit there with their bag lunch or somewhere.
Yeah.
So I think you have to be very careful there. The other concern I heard was people were smoking at those tables, and so that, you know, we don't have a specific bylaw that deals with that, but it made other people uncomfortable, so I think you have to be careful, you know, food trucks are designed to grab your food and go, go somewhere else, not to park there and have a, you know, sit-down meal. So you've got to remember what that's about, and I think that is the right objective. The other concern with the trailer is, is that they're not very self-contained, and they have stuff spilling out the back, and it isn't very good. So I think on a going-forward basis, we need to try to set these standards that, you know, food trucks are pretty good, right? They're self-contained, they come and they go, people come and get their food, and they wander wherever they go sit down. The fish and chip trailer's been there for a while, it's sort of exerted a bigger presence than a normal food truck would, and I think that's probably why you're hearing people saying, well, it should be on the other side. Right? So I think that's the concern I have. If you look at the food truck industry, it's different, in my view, better than what we currently have. So I think that's what you have to keep in perspective, and I would hope that on a going-forward basis, we wouldn't have some of those concerns.
Well, and I think if you want to go see a, a pretty good example is if you go to Parks Feld in there, Park Down on the Water there, they actually got spots for two food trucks, and there's, they don't have their own tables, there's just picnic tables spread out, and when you actually look at what they're doing there, I was there the other day, and one food truck's really busy because he's doing pizzas, and everybody wants pizza, and the other guy, not so much, you know, he had samosas, and there was nobody there. So part of the fee is, you know, what you're selling in your food truck too, but remember that they're not all going to be as popular as others, so some are going to make it, some aren't. But I do think the fee is an important piece to make sure that it actually works, but I think that to have those tables down in that little area, I think it takes away from that public space, that the public should be able to just go and use and stand by the braille or do what they want, and I don't think it's, you're right, it's the exclusive use of a restaurant now, so I have a bit of a problem with that.
Yeah, well, is that more important for something than the VIA as well?
Yeah. Counselor Grant?
Just a quick question, though. Victoria was used as an example in regards to the $50 fee. I'm wondering about mid-sized communities or similar-sized communities, is there, is this a standard fee, or are we close to the ballpark?
Partially is it.
We are, we are doing additional research into what other communities are charging, so that, that research will come out when we bring forward the bylaw.
Yeah, you've got to keep, it's obviously seasonal, too, so. Okay, anything further on that? So the recommendations on a going-forward basis, we will be, that these get approved in terms of the draft, the comments to follow, and that we will further see the bylaw amendments, and of course, there'll be an opportunity, obviously, for any other stakeholders, if you will, to comment.
I just had one other thing, it was, I read the report a couple times, and I wasn't sure, I read it one way, one time, and a different way. So if I get a food truck permit, I can go to any of the areas in the town, and I'm good, or do I have to get a specific one for each location? I read that twice, and I wasn't sure which one it said, what it said.
That is a good question, so, and I did say in the report somewhere that if you have multiple units at different locations, then of course.
That makes, that makes perfect sense.
A separate license. So, you know, I think that the, that the idea is flexible enough that, that, you know, if you want a year for one month, and a different part for another month, that it's here.
Yeah, okay.
Or that could even be on a day-to-day basis, right? Maybe we need to have some clarity in the Q and A on that.
I just wouldn't want to go through that. I just wouldn't want to go through that whole regular old, every time I want to go to a different location and so on.
Okay.
Good ground.
So if they do get a permit, wants to meet all the requirements, then they could be located in any of those places. Obviously with the parameters of, you know, we don't have twenty-five food trucks all in one place, but in terms of the areas that can take more than two. Okay, so all is in favor? Any opposed? Motion's carried. And I think that brings us to our late item, which we'll deal with on the first ones. This is from the regional district. Thought we'd bring this forward to have at least a preliminary discussion on it. It hasn't, I don't think been specifically referred to us, I think. So it's more just for information piece that our regional district directors will be dealing with on a going forward basis. So I guess I'll turn over to staff initially and then maybe the directors can come in.
Yes, your worship, thanks. It was just a cause of a little my surprise that this, this committee that used to be the cycling task force, which then became this integrated transportation group. My understanding is the general focus was to try and create a multi-use bike path along Dyke Road between Courtney and Comox and has now, seems to have morphed into the notion of possible service and kind of moving away from, from the concept of the specific project, which I thought was more achievable. So I don't know if directors, Price or Grant have heard anything about this yet, but it seems to have generally taken a turn in a different direction. And from a staff perspective, whenever there's discussion about a service, alarm bells go off because generally, once they're established, although this talks about minimal cost to begin with, costs never seem to go down with services, they always go up.
Okay, great. Okay, so directors and regional district, are there?
Well, I would agree with just what everything our CIO just said.
And Counselor Price?
Yes, well, I, I actually went to the last integrated transportation meeting and Castle Kinnon wasn't able to take my place. So I had emailed with David Frisch and if there was anything to talk about, for him to phone me and I spent, I dialed that number and I didn't hear anything. So I'm sort of surprised to see this. And I have been, you know, like ten pages. So I'm just wondering, you know, what's the deadline on?
It's, I believe it's going to the board next week. And, and the recommendation talks about the board give consideration to. And, and they're talking about a service that would consult with local governments initially, but there are the options of regional transportation plans and something much more significant than what's initially established. With, with the basis being that a service would be able to have more influence than just the current structure of local governments working together, which, which to me seems interesting because in my experience, every time the, the three communities of Courtney, Comox and Cumberland, along with the regional directors have gone together on a project, at least even if they've approached the province saying, look, we all support this, we're all working towards this, the province supports it generally quite positively. So the, the notion that you need a service to accomplish that seems to, from counter to what I've experienced. So I'm not sure where this, this emphasis is coming from for service.
It seems a bit the cart before the horse too. I just thought that we all need to have buy-in on the project and have some idea what the project's going to look like. And then if you go, the only way we can do this is to go to A, that's the time you consider it rather than create something and then.
Yeah, you seem to have lost touch on the whole path. Like it's just, it's no longer part of the discussion.
Okay, Counselor Kent?
Just a quick comment is that I feel that I can't do this document justice. I know when I left home, I hadn't received the late item agenda in my email and I came down an hour before the meeting.
We don't have to decide anything.
And I appreciate it's, it's supposed to go to their next meeting, but we're, we're looking at documents, none of us have read. I don't really know the pros and cons and I appreciate our CIO's comments on that. Counselor Price was not able to attend the last meeting. I, I don't think I, I can give this full attention because I don't know all the details of it.
We're not asking you to make any decisions. We're more or less just bringing it as help for.
It's more of a permission.
And it's just a concern as any time you are asked to participate in a service, there's always the cost associated with the regional district. I guess the alarm bells are going off and staff, like certainly from my perspective, having read this, when I saw it, you know, it just says something that they're going to consider is part of something that I don't think any of us had ever thought about. So unless somebody had more information on this, I guess that's why we got it forward. You know, beyond this so-called multi-use path, that's as far as I saw it going from the, whatever the task force is called. And then beyond that, we'd be in another battle together. There's huge complications with getting into this kind of regional approach, particularly given that the regional district is not really at all in charge of transportation in the electoral areas. That's a potential. So that's a huge issue and so people should be aware of that. I guess what I would ask is that in the fullness of time, you read this material and if you have any further concerns on it, you pass those through either to the regional directors involved or certainly through staff. We won't be bringing this back to council unless and until, it says here, it says, "The recommendation below proposes that the CVRD board support an approach whereby a delegation comprised of current IRT SC members present the concept to each municipal council and suppose district number seventy-one." So unless and until that happens, this is just background information and staff can respond accordingly.
And the last mention that I had of this, we had a discussion on whether we were in favor of this multimodal trail down along, down along the estuary. And of course, it was exceedingly clear that it should be a multimodal path and that finding a route was going to be the hard part. And that's really the last that I, I heard. It was actually very clear that it wasn't to be a bike path, but to be a multi-use for the good of all to use. So this, you know, I just got, I didn't actually realize we had a late item until I got here, but this comes as a bit of a surprise.
Just one last thing, and I have made it clear at meetings I've been at, that this council supports a multi-use path and, and not simply just a cycling path. And that we, we work out the details. I know there's complications, but I've come from that point. And it's interesting, it is addressed to each of the municipalities. And Cumberland at the moment, although they have a seat, have declined to be part of this, so.
I wish I would.
So, you know, rocky ground to, if you're thinking about a service with a group that hasn't even committed to any buying.
I actually agree with them on this one.
All right, so nothing other than receiving after information and that will ease our agenda. So anything else? Motion to adjourn the deal. Booing in favor?